Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of Ju- July 10th, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a beautiful night.
Turn it down.
Make it cooler is what you're saying. Cooler. It is a little warm in the chambers right now, but I did turn it down a little bit, but. And I will say again, as I said the last couple of meetings, I see a lot of our officers here, so one, welcome, and two, I always feel safe to see you guys here, so thank you. So first, we have public comment, and first, we have a presentation of a resolution regarding Sergeant Hernandez' years of service with the Rochester Police Department on his upcoming retirement. And I have a resolution here that I'll briefly read, and I will just say Sergeant Hernandez started with the Rochester Police Force the same year I first came onto City Council. So, and his wife is a teacher as well. So it's a small world, but.
That's my ex-wife.
Practice wife, practice.
That was my starter wife.
Yeah. She's got her head down.
Can we rewind the video?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Start over.
So much for trying to be personable and friendly.
I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you.
Just read it.
Twelve years old.
Yes. Wow. Yeah. Resolution to congratulate Ulysses Hernandez on his retirement from the Rochester Police Department, where Ulysses retired from the City Council, the City of Rochester Police Department on July 19th after 24 years of service. He served as a patrol officer and as a sergeant. During his years of service, he was committed to keeping the City of Rochester safe for its residents, business owners, and visitors, and whereas the City Council is appreciative of Ulysses Hernandez' diligence and hard work during his employment, it is therefore resolved that the Rochester City Council expresses its sincere gratitude to Ulysses Hernandez for his years of service to the Rochester City Council. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
You want to say a couple of words?
I do. I better. So my wife, obviously, is the most important person in my life. She's a court administrator in Clinton Township, so she's here tonight. She helped me get to this point. Lamenting a little bit about this decision. It's been 33 years for me, actually, with my other department. I started in Wayne County in 1990. I was 19 years old, grew up on the east side of Detroit with Chief Roheb, actually. We went to the same grade school, same high school.
Oh, gosh.
We are eastside Catholic school boys.
Nice.
Always wanted to be a cop, always. I grew up in that neighborhood, nothing but Detroit police officers working for the city. I immigrated here in 1974, couldn't speak a lick of English, and then had some nuns in my grade school that were on missionary in the Philippines and could speak both languages, and I learned it overnight. Again, I want to add that I always wanted to be a cop. I'm getting a little emotional right now because I will never probably ever wear a uniform again, but my next career, I'm staying in the line of work, working for the medical examiner's office as an investigator, and I start that six days after I retire.
Awesome.
So much for retirement. Three kids in Catholic school still, so.
Yeah.
I just want to add, City Council hasn't always been the best in my years here. This is the best I've seen it right now. In the early years, as Mayor Bixson would know, it was just not like it is today. I'd just like to add that if you continue to support the police officers, Chief Roheb, you know, you'll have the best city, which you already do. I can't think of anything else that I need to say, other than there's a very well-known trainer in our line of work called, his name is Lieutenant Grossman, and he talks about our line of work. He used to teach classics at West Point, and he talks about the shield and the gun. It's basically, we're the modern-day knights. You know, there's a reason why our badge is the shape of the shield, and we have our gun on the right side, so your sword and your shield. And we talk about that, and we preach that as your modern-day knights, as your protectors. And the guys here, we take it personal. There's a reason why people don't come to Rochester and mess around. It's because of us.
That's right.
So we take it personal, and I hope that you guys will, and I know you will continue to support the police department. So thank you very much.
Congrats. Chief, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. And I'd just like to take a moment to congratulate Sergeant Hernandez as well. You know, it's a great opportunity to see someone end on a high note, a 30-year-plus career in law enforcement, someone who has started out working at the sheriff's office in the jail and working his way up to becoming a sergeant here at the Rochester Police Department, contributing to the department, you know, working to start the Honor Guard program here and a number of things that he was helpful with in keeping going here at the Police Department. So if you ever want to know something that happened in the past, or you have a question about something, this is the guy. His memory is amazing, can remember everything. And he's done all this by working midnights 100 years, so I don't know how he can remember all this stuff, but he certainly does, and that's certainly a wealth of knowledge that will be missing here at the Police Department, but we know we can call him up, and probably in the middle of the night when he's still awake, and answer, find some historical tidbit that we're missing. So, but congratulations, Uly.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, thank you. I'd just like to congratulate you, and then, you know, we have had a few retirements here, I've noticed, over the past month or so, and so, you know, those are always a little bittersweet, right? We have a lot of experience and knowledge walking out the door. We're excited for you personally, but that also brings opportunities within the department. So I'm looking forward to seeing how the department continues to grow, and it's time for promotions for some other people within the department. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Yep, congratulations.
All right. Is there any other public comment before we have our OPC presentation?
Mr. Mayor, there's a hand raised on the Zoom.
Okay. Zoom call, come on in. Do you need to unmute? Ms. Turner, is that you?
Yep. That's me.
How are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good, what's up?
I have a couple of comments that I would like to make.
Okay.
And.
Go ahead.
I don't know if, I just want to let you know that I want to know about the Zoom meetings and Rewald's thing. So when it gets to that, can you call me? I mean, I'll be here, but let me know.
Can't you watch, maybe just watch the meeting in the background, and then when it comes on the agenda, I don't know if anybody's available to call you.
No, I'll be on the phone, but I want you to know ahead of time that I would like to speak upon those.
Absolutely, I'm sorry. I didn't get that one.
I didn't either.
Okay.
Okay, I'll mute myself for now.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have the presentation receipt of the fiscal year 2024 to '26 OPC budget. Renee and Tim, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bixson, council members. So, yes, so Tim and I are here to present the 2024 to 2026 budget, and giving overview of the programs and our capital improvement projects that we have been involved in over the last year. I did have a, okay, Anthony, great, thank you.
Is that us?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right.
Start slide somewhere.
Top.
Slide show.
Little slideshow icon.
Here, I'll do it.
I see that far off.
There you go.
Slide show.
All right, we got it. All right. There we go. All right. Shows the whole team at the holidays with our ICAA award. So what I did this time, this year, is just kind of put a nice collage of photos, the day in the life of OPC. And literally, these photos were all taken on one day, and we ran around the facility and took photos, but it just goes to show you the variety, the breadth and the width of the programming that we provide at the center is really second to none anywhere. Our total participation within the last year, 178,305 individuals have walked through the facility and participated in one activity or another. We continue to have new members who join every day and are just pleased with the facility. I'll never forget, I ran into a gentleman at the Walk for Parkinson's, and he had just become a new member, and he came down from Traverse City area, and he said, "This place is amazing." It's given me so much for my life, and for his wife, and he's just loving it. So again, just thank you to the community for continuing to support the OPC. And if you are 50-plus and you are not a registered member, come on down. You're supporting it, and the price is right. So, all right, just some statistics on our supportive services. Our mini buses traveled 41,829 trips this last year. Our nutrition department, 100,000 nutritionally balanced meals for our homebound seniors. Our senior services, we're still so involved with our commodity food programs, our information and referral support services, support groups, our medical equipment loans, our adult day service. We have so many services that help so many, many low-income continue to stay in their homes, and that's what you want, people aging in place in your community. You can see we have a wonderful adult day service, and that is a wonderful respite for those individuals that are benefiting from the program, and also a respite for the caregivers. Our volunteers, we logged 28,405 hours. That's pretty amazing. Again, delivering meals on wheels, meeting and greeting, supporting us as servers for our many programs. I mean, the list goes on and on. Many of you were at a recent soiree. You saw the servers there. Those were our members. They just love to give back, and how great is that? So our capital improvement projects, that's where we've really, as we've talked in these last few years, that's one reason why we did ask for the increase in our millage. And as you can see, we did half of the facility roof was replaced this last year, or just within May. We had the vegetable gardens. That addition is, if you drive by now, the gardens are all just, wow, they're just amazing right now. Our parking lot repairs, and our lap pool retiling and replumbing for the locker room showers, that's going to occur the first two weeks of August. Our walking track is in the process of being resurfaced. The walls have been painted, and we also put in some building insulation improvements this year. And so we're really looking forward to that payback this winter. That's going to be fantastic, because the, just over time, that insulation had really worn down, and so there was a little drafty in the winter, so we're really looking forward to no drafts this winter. So I'll turn this over to Tim for some of these budget highlights.
Yes, good evening. I won't go by point. I also know you've seen the budget for a while, so just a couple of main points. Our budget has increased, and it's primarily due to the county transportation money. We received $1.9 million from the county for the transportation program. That covers all our direct transportation costs, as well as all our administrative and infrastructure costs. So it's a rather robust amount of money covering all our transportation. Specifically, one thing it means for you on the council is that you previously had allocated some of your general fund money to support transportation. We no longer need those allocations, and obviously, they're not included in the budget. We're using the county money to that. From when you step away from the transportation part, the rest of the budget is relatively flat. We are back to, the nice thing is, we are back to pre-pandemic levels in all our classes, all our fees, and all our activities, so we are busting out of the seams that way. We are operating simply on inflationary factor. We do have a couple of personnel things. We are, the board has included a 4% general increase in the budget for the employees, as well as adding two new part-time positions due to the increase in demand, one in fitness and aquatics, and additional cook help because of nutrition meals. Other than that, we are pleased to know that our operating revenues are exceeding our operating budget by $478,000. So we're still covering our costs by our revenues. That additional money will go to the capital improvement plans that Renee mentioned. In addition, we have a fund balance support set up for those, so those will all be covered through our budget, through those two funding sources.
Very good. Any questions? Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Renee, thank you, Tim, and I'm looking forward to the new track in the winter. But I saw, I went through the report and obviously support the budget. I know the fund balance is 25%. I see the number. What is the fund balance in terms of percentage?
Oh, fund balance.
I'm not a numbers guy like Mayor Protem Salvia, so.
Our fund balance is, let me turn the page here for you.
Five million?
Yep, our fund, our fund balance is.
Bottom of page 10?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, actual fund balance itself, the total fund balance for this budget year would be $3.9 million.
So what is that, a percentage?
Which is roughly 47% of expenditures.
Okay, great. That was what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, real quick, I love what you presented as well. I love what you're doing there, so I think everything is going well. I'm just curious why the 4% wage increase and then down to 3 in the following years.
Well, how we budget that, the 4%, the 4% is the only solid figure we have. Every year, the board, in their budget process, will decide a general increase if one is warranted. So we simply put a place marker in for 25 and 26, a 3%. That doesn't mean it'll stay there. It's simply a mathematical place marker at this point.
And I read that, and that's okay then. I guess, I just wanted, I was just curious, because even though I had read that in there, I was, you know, I know that a lot of significant changes have taken place, so I mean, I know it's warranted. It's, it was questioned to see if there was any other factor that was included. Okay, and then, on the expenditures, under Schedule A, all the payroll, the salaries and wages, does that, this page actually include everything for transportation as well with the new people?
Yes.
Is it all in one?
Yes.
Okay, so under transportation on Schedule A on the second page for expenditures, that's just everything else, all the expenses for that program, or just transportation in general?
What you see under the transportation line item is the entire transportation program.
Okay, okay. I kind of figured as it jumped up so high, but I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, thank you, Renee, thank you, Tim. Tim, you and your team, you're a really efficient team, do such a great job keeping track of the finances for the OPC. I have great confidence in you. Per Councilmember Peterson's comments, it is important to note that all transportation costs funded through the OPC come from that millage, so 100% through there. So again, as the board member for the OPC and City Council representative, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Peterson. Is there further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Congratulations on another great year. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I just, I want to make just a couple of announcements. I just, as I'm going back to talking about the transportation program, we did have our new Director of Transportation just come on board in the last three weeks. Her name is Ann Murphy. So she's coming in, getting acclimated to all that we do at the OPC, and of course, will be the contact for the county in regards to the transportation she brings with her project management and IT experience, and we're really excited to have her on board. So I wanted to let you know that, and also, Mayor Bixson, since you have a non-egonarian your father, we have a wonderful party that's going to happen, celebrating our non-egonarians on Thursday this week at 1 o'clock at OPC. And so if you'd like to come by and say hello, please do so, and learn their secrets to longevity. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, regarding your garden beds, driving by that every day, there's so many people in there too, and they look incredible, and I love the way you designed that. I think that was very well done, so it's going to be very sustainable the way it was done, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Further public comment? Okay, next, we have approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of June 26, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember.
Sage.
Sage, thank you. I wasn't sure if it was. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, the consideration request to approve a curb and gutter replacement project between Romeo Runyon Road and Parkdale Road. Mr. Alec, DPW Director, welcome.
So tonight, we have, I guess, the city conducted a public bid opening for a curb and gutter replacement project, or program on the east side of town. For the past 10-plus years, the city's been doing sidewalk replacements throughout the city. It's been very successful. We've gone through the city multiple times. We decided to put that on pause now and focus more on some curb replacements. If any of you live on the east side of town, a lot of those multiple curbs are starting to crack, and a lot of places would just use hot patches to fill them up, and it's not really a good fix. So we're proposing to go and do concrete placements of a lot of the cracked areas of those curb and gutters. Went out for a bid, and the lowest bid that we received was from Luigi Ferdinandian Sun for a total of $251,082. There's a map in your packet that shows the areas where city staff have identified cracked curbs on the east side of town. Originally budgeted for this project was $200,000. We're requesting an increase to the full bid amount to use fund balance from the local roads fund. The pricing that we received was, in our opinion, in our city engineers' opinion, a pretty good pricing. So after discussion at the Infrastructure Committee, we decided to request the full bid amounts of the $251,000. And then if approved, city staff will work with HOAs to spread the word, and once we have schedules in line, just, you know, start notifying residents of when they expect to start seeing contractor in town and doing the work.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Alec. I know this proposal is for all the east side, south of Runyon. Is the plan next year to then move to the north of Runyon subs there?
Correct, yeah. We were kind of treating this year as kind of a pilot year to see how the program goes, and the idea is to then, yeah, move on to new areas to address other areas where there's damaged curb.
Okay, thank you, Alec.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. So I was looking at this map. That's a huge area that is going to be done, and I know from reading it all, there hasn't been done, right? Is, but I'm just concerned, not concerned, my question is, so in the areas that really haven't had any use, I mean, are they starting to, where are you doing the worst part first, and then you'll go into some of these other areas that aren't marked?
Yeah, we're just replacing areas where it's correct. So if you live in that area of town, you might have saw one of our staff members out today going and spray painting some curb. And so you'll see a lot of just kind of three-foot sections where we're trying to save costs instead of doing a whole 30-foot stretch, really just going after the areas where it's compromised.
Okay, and some, if I may, in a few other communities I've been in, I've been noticing how some of those higher curbsides.
project between Romeo Runyon Road and Parkdale Road. Mr. Alec, DPW Director, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have, I guess the city conducted a public bid opening for a curb and gutter replacement project or program on the east side of town. For the past 10-plus years, the city's been doing sidewalk replacements throughout the city. It's been very successful. We've gone through the city multiple times. We decided to put that on pause now and focus more on some curb replacements. If any of you live on the east side of town, a lot of those multiple curbs are starting to crack, and a lot of places would just use hot patches to fill them up, and it's not really a good fix. So we're proposing to go and do concrete placements of a lot of the cracked areas of those curb and gutters. Went out for a bid, and the lowest bid that we received was from Luigi Ferdinandian Sun for a total of $251,082. There's a map in your packet that shows the areas where city staff have identified cracked curbs on the east side of town. Originally budgeted for this project was $200,000. We're requesting an increase to the full bid amount to use fund balance from the local roads fund. The pricing that we received was, in our opinion, in our city engineers' opinion, a pretty good pricing. So after discussion at the infrastructure committee, we decided to request the full bid amounts of the $251,000. And then if approved, city staff will work with HOAs to spread the word, and once we have schedules in line, just, you know, start notifying residents of when they expect to start seeing contractor in town and doing the work.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Alec. I know this proposal is for all the east side, south of Runyon. Is the plan next year to then move to the north of Runyon subs there?
Correct, yeah. We were kind of treating this year as kind of a pilot year to see how the program goes, and the idea is to then, yeah, move on to new areas to address other areas where there's damaged curb.
Okay, thank you, Alec.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. So I was looking at this map. That's a huge area that is going to be done, and I know from reading it all, there hasn't been done, right? But I'm just concerned, not concerned. My question is, so in the areas that really haven't had any use, I mean, are they starting to, where are you doing the worst part first, and then you'll go into some of these other areas that aren't marked?
Yeah, we're just replacing areas where it's correct. So if you live in that area of town, you might have saw one of our staff members out today going and spray painting some curb. And so you'll see a lot of just kind of three-foot sections where we're trying to save costs instead of doing a whole 30-foot stretch, really just going after the areas where it's compromised.
Okay, and some, if I may, in a few other communities I've been in, I've been noticing how some of those higher curb sides are cracking more. Are you, when they're coming out of the apron, is this anywhere near the apron area then?
It could be. There are, we actually have noticed that a lot of the compromised curb and gutter is at the entrance to people's driveways.
Right, so, okay, so from what I've seen, it goes up so high. I'm not, I'm not sure why that apron is going up so high, because to me, it's, it seems higher than some of the ground level, and it's way higher than the driveway. So when you pull out of some of those with that, your car hits it coming down, right, if you don't pull out just right. And I'm wondering if that's attributing to it, and are we going to continue with the high curb sides, you know, coming out of those aprons like that? Because I just don't think that they're made strong enough, because you really can't, right? You're going up, and I've noticed that even at first in Alice, you know, one of the curbs where you're, where they're turning the corner, and that one's all actually collapsed in there right now, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't match the curb to the drive approach, because we have to make sure that it'll still drain water properly. So if there are areas where the apron of the drive approach is higher, it's more than likely going to remain that way, because we have to make sure that the gutter still does what it's meant to do and, you know, allows stormwater to travel down. If a residence wants to have their driveway done at the same time, or something like that, you know, we can work with them to make sure that they are more flush with each other to try and prevent that sort of, you know, falling onto it and maybe causing more damage. But it's going to, if it's uneven now, it's more than likely part of it to be uneven again, because that's just, we have to make sure that stormwater is still able to travel down the gutter. Is that what you're asking?
Well, in a way, yes, because some of these sidewalks that were just done as well, you're seeing that at the corners, where the, they go so high up on the sides here in town. I haven't, I'm just, where I walk is where I'm seeing that. And to me, they're almost like a trip hazard as well, because they go up so much higher on the sides when you're going to turn, and I just, you've seen that, right? So I'm just wondering, because if they do that, if they're going to continue doing that in the driveway, we're going to continue having this problem, because there's not enough thickness there to take care of it. And coming from a family that did cement, I just, like, can we, like, make sure that we are a little more, can they do something to change that approach coming out? And not to change what's out in the street, but the aprons that they're going to redo to where they're not up so high, to where we don't have to continually do that. This is a lot of yellow. I mean, a lot.
And those parcels that are shaded yellow, there may just be one little three-foot stretch in front of that park property. So, yeah, if it's yellow, it doesn't necessarily the whole curb is getting replaced. It just means that there is a section in front of that property that has compromised gutter. It may be a little three-foot section, it may be, you know, 10.
And since they're doing all-new concrete, then what are going to be the restrictions regarding salting and things like that in the winters? Are going to be, are you going to have to let it stand longer? Other communities are having, like, they've had no salt on their streets for all of winter, because they were all new. So until this coming winter, will they do that? So I don't know if we're going to, I mean, I just don't want it to break down. It's going to be new, and it's not really made the same as it used to be.
Yeah.
It's actually going to be sealed, and we're getting it if we do it now. You know, in a few months, it will be safe.
Oh, okay, all right. That's fine, then. Just checking.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the curb and gutters as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, Alec, thank you. Next, we have discussion regarding the continuation of Zoom service for the city meetings. Councilmember Albrecht had brought this up, and a number of council people had discussed it with me as well, so we put it on the agenda. I did ask the city manager for a cost, and the cost for the year comes out to between $1,000 and $2,000 for the year.
Oh, for the year? That's not bad.
For the year. And in theory, it could be zero if the city manager chose to do flex time or, you know, things like that. So before we start discussing up here, I know Ms. Turner, did you want to, all right, why don't you come up first and then introduce yourself, and then we'll go from there. Welcome.
I'm Christine Zimmerman, and I live at 743 Ludlow. And I just wanted to, I'm just concerned about taking Zoom down, and I know that you have another way to call in, that you can call in on the phone as an alternative. But I think there's a lot of reasons that people aren't able to be here in person, and I know that you don't always have a packed house, you know. But when there is an issue that people want to be involved in or want to have their voice heard, making sure that people with children that can't come, people with mobility challenges that can't come, can be here and be present in the best way possible. And 80% of communication happens non-verbally. That's a lot, 80%. And so if all you're doing is calling in on a phone and listening to the meeting on the phone and trying to communicate in that way to council members, I don't think that you have the same impact that you do when, whoop, when you're not going to like, when you, when your face is up on the screen and you can, you can share your thoughts. So I think with a minimal cost, and I don't know, you know, if it's a staffing issue, but I'm sure that there's a lot of creative ways to solve that as well. You know, I'd certainly, I'd volunteer to do a couple of months out of the year if we got a couple of people to volunteer to run the Zoom meeting. It's not that difficult to do. So that's something I'd be willing to do, because I think we have a lot of people in our community that could benefit. Again, I know it's not, you probably have many, many months where nobody comes on Zoom, is my guess, but for the one time that you need, that somebody wants to be here, it gives them that chance. So hope you consider that.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, are you there?
I am.
Okay, you're on. Welcome.
I agree with the lady that just spoke. I think it's very beneficial, and I benefit from it. I don't agree with the statistics. The other woman and I have been on several times, and I think it's beneficial to the city and to the citizens to keep it going.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
And what was the cost again?
Between $1,000 and $2,000 for the year, and it could be lower if the city manager chose to do staffing differently.
Well, I agree, and I will volunteer. I have no problem. I don't know what it involves, so that might be an issue, but I will volunteer.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments from the two citizens, and thank you, Leanne, for pulling this information together. We put in the, you know, going back in time to March 2020, when we had completely Zoom, we were all dialing in from home. Then we came into this room, which was reconfigured, and we had plastic partitions between us. We did that for a while. Then we finally brought back where we sat up here at the dais, and again, we had precautions in place for people who came in for the meetings. But as the, you know, as I mentioned a few meetings ago, the pandemic was officially ended, and we, as a city, back in March, came back to, in public meetings like this. And we've seen over the last two or three meetings where, when the public is motivated to come out, they do come out and speak up. So we are one of the few, if any municipalities, that are still doing the Zoom meetings. Rochester Hills, you, you know, you go to their chambers, and they're packed with people. And I also did a back-of-the-envelope, you know, cost. So, you know, over the first six months, it's a little over $1,100 in overtime cost to staff the Zoom call for really one resident calling three times. So I think it's time we get caught up with where we're at now and where other municipalities are, and go back to in-person meetings like we've done for years and years and years prior to the pandemic.
Councilmember Trent?
Thank you.
No, go ahead.
Well, I had given this quite a bit of thought, and I, you know, realize that what you're saying is January through June, the public uses Zoom options three times. But I think that citizens need to have as many opportunities to get involved as possible, and I know that with ADA compliance, they don't make us do that. But I think that when people are not able to be here, I think it's a good way to have transparency and hear what citizens' voices are. You are the only, you are the voice here. The voted people vote us in to be a voice for them. And I think that personally, I hate to go against Councilmember Albrecht, but I think that, I think that Zoom should stay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I, too, believe that it should stay for a number of reasons. One, we have a very aging demographic. I want them to be able to listen if they choose, join if they choose. I think it's a small price for us to pay to have that service to, for them out there, and not everyone can. And I know that a lot of people that used to come in here no longer did come in any longer because they couldn't because of weather and things like that, especially the aging ones. And I think it's just something that we should provide for them. Also, while the courts still do Zoom meetings and cases, I think that we still have that option to do that, and many committees and things that I sit on, we still do Zoom for the people to be able to come even from across the state so they can still be part of it. And as it was stated by Ms. Zimmerman, I think that, you know, having, having the people have that option is most important, and it's a good service for the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when a citizen watches the stream on the city website, they have no way to interact. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, right.
So when they watch the website, they cannot interact?
Okay. So one of the signal calls from this dais has always been about transparency. And if we are able to provide another way to engage the citizens in the process, I'm in full support of that. So I would not support eliminating the Zoom option.
Is there further comments, discussion? So is there a motion, then?
I'll make a motion that we continue doing Zoom meetings until we hear from the residents that they don't want it, unless city administration comes to us and there is an issue. So I think that's, that's only fair.
So motion from Councilmember Peterson. Is there support?
I'll support the motion.
Support by the Mayor Protem. Further discussion? I'd just like to say, I also think that it's a small price to pay for access to all kinds of different people. If it was a large dollar figure, you know, if it cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe that would be different. But for this minor cost, I think we should also continue to offer this option to our residents. And actually, I'm surprised other communities aren't doing the same thing. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
No.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of a resolution concerning the abolishment of the Brownfield Plan for East Third Street and Paint Creek. Marcy, welcome tonight. Thank you for coming.
So before you is a proposal to abolish the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the REWAL, the first REWAL headquarters, Brownfield. It has been completed. They've paid, we've paid back the Brownfield loan. All of the obligations have been paid for with TIF tax incremental revenue, and it is complete. So in the May 15 and June 26 meetings with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, it was presented to them that the next step is to abolish the, this Brownfield and take it off of tax capture. So it's done. It's, it's kind of a cleanup of the, of a completed project, and it was successfully completed. It was completed and finished before the seven years that was estimated. So it's a success story as far as, as far as the city and the developer is concerned. So before you, we're asking, the Brownfield is making the recommendation to city council and staff as well, for city council to resolve to abolish the Brownfield Plan for East Third Street and Paint Creek.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, Ms. Turner, did you want to talk on this issue as well? You said the REWAL question. You still there, Ms. Turner? Need to mute, unmute? I will try to.
I want to know where the plans changed on REWAL building to be a mixed use with lower commercial and a one-story.
So I'm wondering, Ms. Turner?
Yeah, this is, this is a different project, I think.
Maybe you're referring to the elevator project?
Or the, the green?
Yes, the elevator. Where the heck is the elevator going?
Ms. Turner, this is not, this is a completely different.
The headquarters.
Yeah, this is a completely different topic we're talking about. We're talking about the REWAL headquarters building.
Okay.
The elevator.
Well, get me back on public comments at the end, because I want to know where the elevator is going.
Nowhere.
Nowhere. It's not going anywhere. That's where it's going, but.
Well, what's the thing on today's agenda that shows a three-story or three or four-story thing on University?
I can explain that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So originally, Ms. Turner, when they came in for the Brownfield story, it was based on there was going to be a three-story building on the site, but that's the headquarters building. So it's separate, like the mayor said, than the elevator site. The original elevator site also was going to be the headquarters for One Stream, and that's when we got the million-dollar grant, but they withdrew that, and now it's going through the Planning Commission for live-work units. That is going to be at the August agenda for the Planning Commission.
Right, so Ms. Turner, the elevator project has not come to the city council yet?
Well, what's the new project on tonight's agenda that shows a three or four-story building?
Yeah.
So on tonight's agenda, it's just the one, the one Brownfield request for resolution, and that would be the closure or the abolishment of the REWAL headquarters.
Which is a three-story building.
No, the one I'm looking at shows that it's on University Drive. REWAL's not on University Drive. It's on Mill Street or Water Street.
Was it the previous?
It was last week's package.
It was the previous one.
Yeah.
Because it was in there.
And the reason we pulled that one?
On the June 26 meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. The reason we pulled that one is we had some reimbursement agreement was what was going to be presented to council and to the public. But there were a few additional changes that needed to be made to the reimbursement agreement, and we're in the process of going back and forth between Brownfield Attorney, our legal, and Mocheurie's legal. But what was, was supposed to be presented at that time was just for the reimbursement agreement for that.
Yeah, so again, the elevator project has not officially been presented even to the Planning Commission. They just ran some concepts by the Planning Commission. So it has to go to the Planning Commission, and then it has to come to city council. So it has not been here yet, Ms. Turner.
And additionally, we received a million-dollar grant for the cleanup of that site. So we've been turning in reports to Eagle to let them know our progress, and we've been getting reimbursement from Eagle. So that reimbursement agreement would be between the city and the developer, so that we can provide the developer with reimbursement for the expenses incurred in the Brownfield cleanup that has thus happened. So it's, it would have just been reimbursing of the million-dollar grant on that property for the cleanup.
So what we're talking?
Okay.
Right, so what we're talking about now is completely different than, than that elevator project.
Yes, I understand that now. But there was a project presented, and I was on vacation in June, so I'm not quite sure where. But it was different from the one- But it was different from the one that was presented before that was mixed use and it kept the elevator. So you're saying that has not been presented yet?
Correct.
And when will it be presented?
It's coming to the Planning Commission in August. And then if the Planning Commission approves it, then it would come to the City Council in?
October, about October.
October, let's say, because it has to go through some iterations.
Okay, so please tell me, I'm not going crazy, that what was originally presented at Mocheary and Re-walled was two stories, and what is now being presented is three or four stories and no barn?
No, the barn is going to be there. The barn's going to be there, and it's, I think it's always been three stories. You know, stuff chain, you know, maybe it looked like two or four on the plan.
Well, it could have been a roof thing.
Yeah. So that's where it is, and we'll keep the public informed because obviously the public cares a lot about the elevator, the elevator project.
Yes, we do.
Right.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
All right, thank you. So now what's on the floor is?
Well, the resolution concerning the abolishment of the re-walled headquarters Brownfield Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the abolishment of the Brownfield Program.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia, discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. Well, first, I just want to say thank you to Re-walled and for first, for utilizing the service of the Brownfield Grant and for cleaning up Paint Creek there before they built so we could preserve the water there. Also, it's really awesome that they were able to pay us back a lot sooner than expected. I think that says a lot, especially for what they undertook to take care of that whole area. And it's been really incredible to see that progress over there, all enhanced in the land and all taken care of, so 100% support it.
Definitely a success story.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Vixen?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Next is consideration of a Metro Act permit requested by Everstream. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. And I think ELEC is going to be coming up as well. This is a request from Everstream to, under the Metro Act, to be able to put in additional public right-of-way equipment and materials and lines in the packet. There's a, I put a kind of a long memo in there just because somebody, some may not be overly familiar with the process and what the city's obligations are. The Metro Act process happened a number of years ago. There's a very contentious litigation between municipalities and, because every municipality was trying to do something different, trying to charge for their use of their own right-of-way, which doesn't seem unusual to me. But there was a resolution which turned into the Metro Act, which is essentially, everybody on both sides came together and they kind of worked through a process, whereas if the telecommunications provider presents the standard forms, the standard permits and the application, then the city has a certain amount of days to review it and to deem it to be complete or not, in this particular, and then approve it or not. And there's heavy penalties for just refusing to approve it. And in this particular case, the Everstream Company presented their application, and we reviewed it and determined that it was not complete and accurate. There was a number of errors and incomplete information and documents. So that clock didn't start at that point. We were able to send it back saying, here's where we see the deficiencies. They now have presented what we have deemed to be a complete application. And I believe, and I know ELEC has reviewed this because he's the one who's going to have to be monitoring this because it's in the city's right-of-ways. And at this point, it was deemed to be complete such that it was placed on this agenda for approval. The, if City Council is satisfied with the application, the documents that are in there, that the requested action would be to approve the right-of-way permit and have the unauthorized city clerk and city manager execute the permit. This is a little different than the last couple that the city has received in that there's two different types of permits. There's one that's considered a bilateral, which is more of an agreement between the parties. And that is like a 20-year agreement with the ability to extend, I believe, for another 20, 20 years. This one is less than that. This is a unilateral. I don't know why they went with the unilateral permit, but it's essentially a permit to use your right-of-way. It's essentially the same, but it's a five-year, five-year term. So I believe that they've presented the appropriate paper, supporting paperwork, and I'm not saying I like this process, but this is the process. And I believe the recommendation, well, I know the recommendation is to move forward with the approval of the application. And I don't know if Director Mizakar has anything to add to it. I know he was, you know, he gets into the nuts and bolts of where they're putting things and, you know, the problems that may exist. So if there's any logistics issues, he would be the one to handle that. This means when they're going to do the work, they still have to come out and work with DPW to make sure that, you know, what they're doing is appropriate and that everyone knows when things are happening. So I'll turn it over to.
Yeah, and just to expand upon that, anytime they do want to come back and install or do any work, they still have to submit a standard right-of-way form. So this is, approving this permit now is just basically saying they can do work in the city, and then whenever they want to come back and do individual projects, they still submit a right-of-way permit that has more detailed construction drawings that we have our engineering consultants review to make sure they aren't, you know, getting in the way, getting in the way of any of our utilities, or to see if maybe we can try and combine it with one of our future projects and just try and make it not as much of a invasive, yeah, procedure. And then so, like Attorney Kraut was saying, we, you know, we have names and contacts for the project managers, people doing restoration, and every right-of-way permit they get, they still have their bonds associated with that. It's, like you were saying, it's, you know, we don't have a lot of control over it, similar to, you know, Verizon or AT&amp;T coming in with their 5G small cell, you know, the state says you have to allow it. Here's kind of your few things you can kind of look after, but that's about it. So really, this is kind of more reformality.
And they are already in the city?
Correct, yeah. This is one where they never came and got a Metro Act approval with the city. I don't know when they started to get their infrastructure constructed in the city. So I'm trying to, whenever we get these permits come in, make sure that they have this agreement, and if they don't, come to the City Council and get it approved before moving forward. So once this is approved, they have a current right-of-way permit they're waiting on to do some underground work on Pine Street around University.
Very good. Councilmember Gould? I think you just answered my question. So when they do come to do the work, you're going to handle the permits, it doesn't come back to Councilor? Thank you.
Correct, yeah. And then we handle, Jason does a lot of the inspections, and he works with their restoration people and handles any phone calls we get and that sort of thing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yep, thank you. So how much are they going to go in and do any hard work? I mean, I've seen them out here recently too or nearby. But are they going to hurt the concrete or anything in some of the areas, especially at Pine and University? We just had some new stuff put down. I mean, is it going to be obvious that it's going to need to be redone or anything like that?
Most of these companies coming in are all doing underground boring. So you might, you know, they have a small boring pit on both sides where they connect, and a lot of times they try and do it in a grassy area where they don't have to do much restoration.
And they'll put the grass back to normal?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Or any other damaged areas that might happen.
But is this all blue, what they're doing, all the blue?
A lot of that blue is existing.
The existing, okay.
Infrastructure they have in the city, yes. I believe there's one of those pages that shows kind of their latest proposed project, which is that.
Just that one, okay, this one here, yeah. This one with the green?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right. It just didn't have it marked, so, okay.
The green is showing overhead, and then the blue is usually showing underground.
I see, okay. All right, that makes sense too on here now.
And we do try and work with these companies to make it so they're not just putting a bunch of underground in our way, you know, so we, a lot of times they do work with us and try and come up with the best compromise solution so they're not getting in our way. But at the end of the day, we do have to allow these companies to come in and to install their infrastructure, so it's a little push and shove.
So, I guess, real quick then, so they are going by the old library then, right? They're going to go right past there because that's where all that new concrete and all the new grass and everything is?
Uh, no. One second.
Pine, is it down one?
Yeah, it's, um, it is.
It's the green line?
Yeah, right, I know, I was just.
It's the page 84 in your packet.
Right, right. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so it's just that purple is the aerial, where they have existing, some existing aerial, and then going north is the green underground under University.
You're saying it's, yeah, on the other side of University is next to the library, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, isn't this?
Yeah, yeah, that is the old library.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, the old library. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, the old library, when I said, you didn't hear me say old, but, yeah, okay, yeah, the old library, okay. No, I understand it.
I didn't know it was the old library, I learned some new today.
And the new, the Rochester Corner Bar is the old post office, so. Been the both. All right, so all that grass and all that would all be maintained and taken care of. I know, because you guys were all out there working really hard, putting that in too when that was done the first time, so.
Yeah, and I can tell you, Jason's on these guys like a hawk too, so make sure that they.
Yeah, okay, awesome.
Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia?
Oh, thank you. Just, I had some discussion with Finance Director Maggio about the Metro Act payments and, you know, how that works, and, you know, if they put additional linear feed into our city, then we get increased payments flowing through the Metro Act. So that was important for me to clarify the economics and how that money comes back to the city. So with that, I guess I'd make a motion to, what am I looking for here, to approve the unilateral right-of-way telecommunications permit and authorize the city clerk and city manager to execute the permit.
Support. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia, support by Councilmember Gould, discussion, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So just to clarify, they've met the statutory requirement with a complete permit application, correct? But when they do submit the final plan and type of installation, you have the ability, administration has the ability to say, no, that doesn't work for us, correct?
Yes and no. We can give a little pushback saying, we really don't like it here, hey, can you go down this instead? Sometimes they work with you and say, you know what, that can work. Sometimes it's a hard no, we have a customer here, we need to have the infrastructure. So it's, it is kind of a little bit of a game that we, not a game, but we're allowed to add, make requests, but at the end of the day, we still have to allow them to install their infrastructure.
The court, the court says they can do whatever they want.
And I will say, most times, the companies I've worked with so far, they have been pretty easy to work with and accommodating, as much as they can be.
And I would add that, when some folks wanted to come in, go right underneath South Street after we just got done doing it, Jason got with them and we put our foot down pretty hard, saying, go in the back aerial until you need to come out, and then they get paid, and they did. So sometimes we win, sometimes we don't win, but we try anyway.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Vixen?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, ELEC. Next is the receipt of the check register, if anybody has any questions. Next is received a report from the various boards and commissions, something that's not on here, that should have been on here, was the Infrastructure Committee. Mayor Pro Tem was going to give a report.
Okay, so the Infrastructure Committee met, what day was this, June 29th. We talked about the summer road construction projects, so DWSRF on Wesley Castell and Wilcox, the sanitary and storm sewer lining projects. Really probably important for public comment was that we did talk about the bill of due request for 403 Wesley and some potential solutions to address that concern brought up by a resident. We talked about the sanitary and storm sewer open cut program, so this is really, we're studying this for fiscal year 2025. We talked about the curb and gutter replacement program, which council just approved, roadmill and fill for 2023. Like to thank Councilmember Sage for sending the PESER ratings for the city of Rochester, showing us we still have a lot of work to do. Then we talked about some miscellaneous storm sewer projects going on this summer. Then probably spent the bulk of our time talking about water rates. It's water rate discussion season, so we will be having two meetings coming up here in the next month and a half, talking about water rates. This mostly, well, it affects both, both systems, but for the GLEWAH customers, we do have some additional costs that we need to take into consideration related to the Shelby water tower that they put in. And there will be some costs that the users of the GLEWAH water flowing through Shelby will need to take into account. Then we talked about lawn irrigation, and really, as a committee, decided that really the best way to approach it is to continue not with a hard restriction, but with our current ordinance, was the recommendation from the committee, which just has us avoiding peak hours. So as a reminder to residents, you want to be watering your grass between midnight and 5:00 AM to keep us out of the peak. And then we just talked about our meeting times and going forward.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, so I appreciate you all talking about lawn irrigation, because I really wanted to present that we do do odd-even days to conserve water in our community. I think it's something that we need to do. Other communities are doing it around here as well. They're actually doing, you know, the peak time too, that you don't do it during the one peak time, but I think that it's important and something I think we should really think about and consider moving forward in light of water conservation. I think it's important to do that. So if we can have administration come back with some thoughts and ideas on that, that would be great.
City Attorney?
Sure, just to refresh, so we did, a few years ago, City Council considered an ordinance that modeled Shelby's ordinance, as I recall. And City Council at that point decided to make it more of a voluntary. So I think, would it be helpful if we brought back what that looked like before for discussion? Because that's really, what Shelby is doing is essentially what you're suggesting.
Well, Washington Township is doing it as well, and I mean, I know we don't have the same, full demographics of land and stuff like that, but I think that it's, I think it's important that, yes, we bring it back, we really discuss it, because I think for us to continue down that path of trying to do everything with nature and all of that, we need to really conserve the water that, and I think it will only help the residents because these fees are going to continue going up, their bills are going to continue getting larger, and everyone has to play a part, right? And I think it's just being mindful of conserving the water today. Your yard will not turn brown just one day if not watering, so.
Okay, next is a report from the OPC. Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia, is there anything left?
No, I think we had a great report already earlier in the meeting with Renee and Tim.
Very good. Next is a report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We heard a presentation from the Mocheary Group on the granery development there at the Rochester Elevator Site. And based on that discussion, we decided to set a public hearing for August 7th to consider the following actions, first being an expansion of the special project boundary to include the entire property. I think you'll remember, within the last month, we approved here on council the master plan's special project boundary and the allowance for any adjacent property to that special project boundary to be included. So they are requesting that, that allowance based on what we have approved. And then finally, we'll, we'll consider the full development site plan for the project. Couple of things I did want to mention about the discussion, first being the elevator. So the group met with the Rochester Avon Historical Society, and they presented their fin- So, the group met with the Rochester Avon Historical Society and they presented their findings and there was an understanding with everyone that the barn is unsafe and in its current form would not be safe to put people in. So, the proposal is to maintain the same footprint, but to replace the, the wood, if you will, um, and make the structure new again, if you will. But there is not a desire to move the barn or tear it down, it is to simply replace it, make it new, make it usable, um, going forward. There's a couple other, uh, interesting tidbits about the development and, and the plan. First being, this is a four-lease property, so it's, they're all residential units. The first floor is considered live-work, right? So based on the new hybrid, uh, work situation that many companies have adopted, um, the first floor would be that space and then the other two floors would be your residence, if you will. The special project that we will approve will have a provision, uh, that will block any conversion of converting that first floor to strict office space. Secondly, the Planning Commission will review the lease, uh, that the developer is proposing, so that they understand any conversion from rental to ownership, uh, would require new approval from not only the Planning Commission, but City Council. And then finally, the construction timeline, uh, six to eight months to finish the brownfield mitigation and then fourteen to sixteen months, uh, to build out the units, of which they say they're just going to continuously, there are not, there's going to be no delay. The, uh, the development will, will proceed.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, um, for administration, so how, okay, so I guess if the first floor is going to be live-work, right? You're going to live on that and work out of there, so how, how is that going to be different than the other floor above? I mean, ser-, I mean, just, you just have.
It, it doesn't have to be, I mean, it could be your man or woman cave, it could be your office on your first floor, it could be a rec room. So it, it's just, it's a three-story unit, the buzzword is live-work, it's set up that way where it's cleaner. When they give them the white box, it feels like an office on the first floor, but they could decorate it with couches if they like, so.
Okay, so, and.
But they can't rent it to any other offices, that's the key.
Okay, but some other, um, communities have the live-work where the first floor is the business?
Yep.
And right above it is where you live?
Yep.
But we're not going to do that.
Correct, so we have that on Milltown, at Milltown?
Right, right.
That's what it is, and that, anybody can rent the first floor, we're not doing that in this case because you would have to have separate parking for the office then, and they're trying to keep this minimal parking, so this is just two spaces per unit with extra for visitors, so, um, that's why it can't be just pure office.
Okay, so you're really not living in it and working in it at the same time, then? It's more like just.
Only you could work in it.
You could.
Live in it and work in it.
So you're gonna have a kitchen, a bathroom and everything in there?
In the upper floors, upper two floors.
Well, right, but not in, but are you going to own, you're not owning, but you're leasing the box?
Vertical.
Oh, you're, oh, okay, so that wasn't real clear, okay.
Yeah, so you'll rent vertical all three stories.
Well, no, then it's fine, because it's, okay, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, so, this is about the, uh, the elevator. So I noticed the facade is gone, of the front of it, the front of it. So, I mean, what you're saying is, uh, the wood isn't usable, so they're going to replicate that?
Absolutely.
And then, they took a lot of pictures.
The barn we know and have pictures of, uh, and paintings of, and it will look the same, it'll just be new wood.
Yeah, I got it. It could be insulated and.
They're gonna paint the parina, uh, chow on, on the side as well, and same footprint.
Okay, yeah, I got it, it was old wood.
And actually, if they can say some of that and tuck point it, they will, um, but at worst, they're saying it would come down and be a replica.
Okay.
So, uh, just two other points, one, of course, it all will, will come to City Council for final approval, because it is a special project. Um, so it is coming here, and two, I mean, it, you know, it looks like a pretty good project. There, there is an example of it in Birmingham, which I can't remember the name of it, uh, but there's a going concern, I guess it's very successful in Birmingham.
It's, it's by the train station and, um.
Oh, those are nice.
Yeah.
So, that's exactly right there.
Those are very nice by the train station.
Councilmember Trent?
Oh, Nancy's.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, so I just wanted to comment for the public that the, the Planning Commission packet from July sixth where this was discussed is extensive. It's six hundred and seventy-one pages, I, you know, I can't say I read every word, but I did go through some of it and learn some great history, there's so much history on that site. Um, aerial photos back from the forties and fifties of Rochester, so, you know, if you can't sleep, it's, it's really interesting.
Councilmember Trent?
Just a comment, so, it's zoned then, part commercial, because, I mean, so.
Part B one, part I one.
Because, you know, normally in residential homes, y- you know, zoning, you're not having people come in and out, because you're saying, okay, it's an office, so obviously they're gonna have customers or clients, but, I mean, so how?
And your neighborhoods today, if you go by the zoning, you can have home occupation, which means you can't have outside employees. Sure, you could make an appointment and come in if you're an attorney or you're a, a tax specialist, but not general walk-up coffee shops, bakery, anything like that, so. We want to keep it tight, because again, there's no parking set up for that. And if I may, the, the mayor brought up a good point that we, they did an extensive six-hundred-page project, they did traffic studies, they did everything. Do you remember, that was a retail operation, so there are people coming constantly, if you've ever been there, getting salt, you can just drive over the Curbery one, anywhere you want to go. So, this is a more organized site, which has got one driveway out, coming underwater, then one on the university. And the mayor asked if there's anything we do to do some traffic calming there, because it's a little wonky when you come out, if you're on water and you want to make a left on university. So, we all met out there, both chiefs, uh, fire chief, myself, Jason, um, and we think we have a solution. And if you remember back in the Main Street makeover, we made that a four-way stop.
Yeah.
Chief Shettenhelm was a supporter of leaving it a four-way stop, but at that time, it's, it's wide, no different than Main Street, at Main Street you had a light there, right? So you, you know you're safer, so, um, but there were some configurations that didn't make it totally safe, so we were out there and found a way to, we already called the developers, said, we're gonna ask you on your dime to do this, which is make all the corners ADA compliant, line them up, stripe it, four-way stop, do a little bump out to narrow it down a little bit, and I think that'll make a massive difference, because now the whole, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, right? You have to cross at the bridge, then across, then back down Main, so now there would be a continuous sidewalk, past the hotel, come down the hill, past the hotel, past Sunrise, and on this facility, and then an organized stop sign corner, four-way stop, so I think this could be a huge improvement. It will calm the traffic on university, we talked about, we don't want it to go through university, but right now, because of Dequender being closed and, and, um, Avon, you don't even know what the real traffic is, so on a normal traffic pattern, we feel like all that's gonna work, and it'll slow everybody down a little bit. Nobody's racing from university all the way up the hill, past the hotel, so I think we might, we're gonna show that to the Planning Commission, the developers like, we're in. So I think we have, we're on a good path.
Where are you putting the sidewalk?
All along, and all along university and water, so everything's gonna tie in now. Right now, there's no sidewalk on water, no sidewalk on university in front of the elevator, there will be now. So you'll be able to go all the way from the Royal Park, stand the same side of the street, get to the corner and cross, and go south on water now, all the way to the mills.
Oh, because it's only that one section on the, on the, okay, on the elevator side, otherwise everything else has a sidewalk, okay.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, well, just to add on, it, it was a four-way stop, I remember that, and now people, sometimes are still stopping. It is very confusing and it's not really lined up well, I mean, I'm surprised somebody didn't run into each other just trying to figure out, okay, what, because of that odd configuration, it's just not a normal.
So our engineers are designing it and they're paying for it.
That's good, that sounds good, thank you.
And the last comment I'll make is, if you want to live there, you should probably start saving your money right now. It's the most expensive project I've ever seen.
Wow.
In Rochester.
And it's small.
Thirty units.
Thirty, I, I mean, to live, to rent it.
Oh.
The highest rent I've ever seen.
It was like two thousand square feet.
Yeah, so, um. Is there any further public comment tonight? Nope, okay, on to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yep, I would just like to say a couple of things, if you see outside here, finally, we're going, Jason's been, um, shepherding that today, they took out the pavement, tomorrow they'll put it back. So we're gonna have a handicap, we took, we got rid of, um, the grass area, adding a parking spot. There'll be a handicap access ramp to, ramp to come into the courtyard, if you will, that will then go to the back door of City Hall and all be ADA compliant. There's boulders and landscaping, the money didn't come from the general fund, it came from, we raised money through the benches program, et cetera. And Vince Repalo, who did Heroes Point, is the one that's doing the landscaping and all the, the, uh, brickwork, et cetera. Um, and ResCom's been doing the removal today, and they did it very quickly, and that'll be put back and look spectacular. And then the employees are gonna sponsor a picnic table and a bench out there, so and everything will be aimed at the parks, it should be a very nice place for anybody to come and sit, so we're excited about that. I think Chris maybe want me to say, this Thursday, Friday, Saturday are sidewalk sales, Friday night is dancing in the streets, so it's a pretty active, uh, weekend for us. We worked with and we appreciate the guys at the former Greens, um, they got their scaffolding down, so the sidewalk's wide open now, so we don't have any impediments for the weekend, so, um, I think we're gonna be in good shape, so everybody come down there and hope to see you there, that's it.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Uh, just to make sure that all of council, um, got my message last week, we have received initiatory, initiatory petitions for two ballot proposals, and those will be before you at your next meeting, um, and Croft, um, Attorney Croft and I will have a report for you and what action you need to take.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Uh, just, uh, happy that we received notice that the, uh, application is open for a State of Michigan grant that, uh, Community House and, uh, the city will be, um, applying for. Um, it's a sixty million dollar grant fund through State of Michigan, thirty million is allocated to non-disadvantaged, uh, entities such as Rochester. Um, the deadline to submit is August thirty-first, and the max we can go in for is two-point-five million, so we'll be going in for the max. Oh, great.
Councilmember Sage?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I just wanted to commend the F- uh, Finance Department with our, uh, tax bill. Uh, they put together this, uh, illustrated, your tax dollars at work, and then the new paying online option that makes, uh, paying taxes, water bills, uh, that much, uh, easier, uh, to do, so, uh, uh, these kinds of things, we talk about transparency, you know, having this dollar bill showing that what goes, what, what, what Rochester services are provided, what county services are provided, what education services are provided. Oh, people, when they got their tax bills, looked at this, and I know, um, Alex is gonna do something similar with the water bills, as Mayor Protem said, we'll be talking about those in the next two meetings, but, uh, this kind of transparency is very helpful to the residents about their tax dollars at work, that's it, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, from, Mr. Albrecht, I heard your voice here reminded that, um, Holly went back and looked at the meeting with Edison, so he could get all the things that we expected from them, reached out to them today, so we're trying to get Jennifer back here to finish up and close that loop.
So they answered all the questions we asked four months ago.
Correct, they answered them, and it was a non-event, but they still, they're willing to come back and say it in their own words. So it was, like, they felt like they communicated enough, but we'll be glad to bring her back. Jason just texted me and said the digital crosswalks will be done in a couple of weeks, so everybody, uh, thanks for your patience, and they got the bases in, now they'll start to install those and we're ready to go.
Councilmember? Councilmember Trent?
Uh, yes, just a couple of things, um, I'd like to thank our, um, the City Beautiful Commission, a couple of volunteers, and Carrie Martin. Sandra Montes is the new member of the City Beautiful Commission, and Janine Crop has, uh, been on the commission for a while, and they planted a mini pollinator garden next to the bridge behind the Community House, and, um, it was really nice to see. And Janine Crop has volunteered, she is volunteering her time to take care of the dinosaur hill, um, uh, pollinator garden next to the community garden, so that your, uh, fruits will, I mean, your vegetables will get pollinated. Uh, the other thing I'd like to just say, and I probably should have said it when Renee was here, is that I really am excited about the one-point-nine million dollar transportation mileage. It was, it filled a need that was sorely needed, I don't know how many people, if they've tried to use the OPC transportation, but I used it for, been using it for five, maybe six years, and it, it started out a few days in advance, and it, so you had to get a week in advance, and it was two and then three weeks, and then they're like, I don't know, just any time you know when you need transportation, let us know, so I really, really am happy about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, just a few things, so, um, since, um, Councilmember Albrecht brought up the, um, uh, tax bill and the dollar, um, expenditures, I actually, um, brought that up in the meeting I was, government affairs meeting I was at today, um, because everyone started complaining about how much taxes are. So I said, well, in our community, this is what we do, and I actually, someone had actually texted to me this morning because they had a question about it as well. So I went over it and I said, you really need to ask your community to do the same thing, so you really know how much is being utilized. I said, because when you have eighteen cents going to state education per dollar and only eleven cents to my police department, it's a little heartbreaking, right? So, um, that's kind of how I presented it, because that's how I feel, so, anyhow, so that was all good, and, um, I think the same thing, I think that's a great tool, um, and it really helps people understand, um, what they're paying for and how lucky they are and blessed to, that we can do things for so much cheaper. Because we're, um, thirty mills in Rochester, no, we're thirty, thirty-two, and Rochester Hills is thirty, so we're doing really good for what we provide. Uh, but a couple other things, um, there's some house bills, um, that are coming, well, there's some bills that are coming that, um, I have given to Attorney Croft to, uh, start looking at and mentioned it to the city manager this afternoon too, but, um, it's called the Michigan Renters Bill of Rights. Um, this whole entire, uh, package of bills was passed in the state of Minnesota, and, um, if you're a landlord, it's going to be very detrimental to you, and I think that people need to, um, find out about it and everything and, and check with their local legislators to help, um, help them understand that some of this isn't going very well, um, going to go very well. Um, and then I would like to, um, ask, um, Attorney Croft, um, regarding the, um, city administrat-, uh, the, uh, school administration building. Um, can we find out if it's still insured, when the last inspections were from the city, um, there? Um, and then if we can, because it is an icon and a landmark, I mean, we don't need anyone falling, getting hurt, it doesn't look like they're really maintaining the property anymore. I walk by it two times a day, and, um, I think that's important. Also, I would like to know, um, are they allowed to have the building not in use if it's still tax-exempt? Um, you know, will they lose their nonprofit status and that if it's sitting there empty? Um, and because they're taking the exemption on the other building, I mean, uh, so.
Good question.
Just, I want, I just want to know those things, um, well, actually, the people want to know, because they're the ones who contacted me about it. Um, so that, and, um, and Nancy, um, Mayor Protem Salvia brought up the Community House grant. I had received a call that somebody heard that there was a grant that we were going to get and, or had gotten, and I just wanted clarification whether or not, so the public knows that we did not receive a grant yet, it's still in that process. And also, along that, um, with the Community House, have they submitted any financials to the city? Or can we get a payment status or anything on how things are going there and progressing? Um, that was part of the contract that they signed with us, and, um, and did they ever find the historical minutes that were, um, asked about quite a while back? All questions from the public, so, but anyhow, um, that's all good, and I think that, um, we sat in with, um, Councilmember Albrecht at the Rochester Hills, uh, chamber event that had at, uh, the Rochester Hills Building regarding the legislative update, which was very informative as well. I think that was very good, um, independent contractor status is one of the biggest hot items right now, House Bill forty-three ninety, and, um, we really need to have people, you know, get informed on that as well, because it can really change, especially in the development side of what they want general contractors to go through, so, um, and right now, anyone else, because it has no exemptions, so anyone who is an independent contractor status, um, is going to be considered an employee if it passes, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, and maybe, uh, Mr. City Manager, at your convenience, maybe reach out to the school board or the school, I know there's new superintendent, new school board president, so maybe there's some change in that building.
Yes, I did, two weeks ago, and I was told that they have nothing to say at this time, I do know the fire chief was in there last week though, so I can get a report from him too, so. He got in to make sure everything was, the sprinkler system was still on, so, so I will get that report, and I will do that also, okay?
And I guess, uh, to follow up with that too, the other thing was, um, is there a reason? And I guess, to follow up with that, too, the other thing was, is there a reason why they're not utilizing the new building that they bought for meetings, and they're going around to all the other schools? That's another.
I think it's not completed yet, is it?
Well, I don't know, it was.
The Letica building?
Well, I know, like, what is the status then? Because no one really knows where to go and how to find out, and also, residents are kind of concerned that you have to have an appointment to even go there to, and no one knows why. So if they can actually be a little more transparent with the district parents and.
I'd like to invite the superintendent here to talk to us.
That would be great.
Because we shouldn't be answering, they should answer some good questions, so I will do that.
All right, thank you.
I'm not sure who the new superintendent is.
Yeah, it's an interim, I believe.
It's an interim, right?
Oh, right. Okay.
Okay, and then, I just, one thing I had was, Thursday night, concert in the park is the Rochester Jello Shots, which are kind of an institution around these parks, so they're going to be there. And then Friday night, Dancing in the Street, they have a really good band, Mark Albrecht and I have seen them in the past, Your Generation is going to be there. So, I mean, it's going to be a fun weekend in Rochester, and I think the weather looks fairly promising, so we'll see everybody downtown, so.
One more? Yep, sorry, since you brought up events. Next week, they have, at Adams High School, is Mary Poppins' play, so if you haven't gotten your tickets, you should go. It'll be great.
And Mayor, we did invite the schools that won the state championships, but they, tonight they're at Rochester Hills, and then, because the school's out, it's a little tough, but they promised they'll come, so we can honor them.
Awesome.
Very good. Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.